This is City of Lawrence Common Council. It's April 5th, 2021. It is now 6:41 PM and the meeting is called to order. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the law.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here on this Easter Monday. I pray for your guidance, strength, and wisdom to come on us as we discuss our city here tonight. We thank you for all that you do. Amen.
Amen. Okay, we have a forum. Looks like all councilors are present and accounted for. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
I have a question. I'm not sure who it's directed for, but I had a constituent call in this week. And so I'm not sure if this is for the administration or the street department, but is the construction off of Fox and Pennycroft, is that Indianapolis? Or is that the city of Lawrence? It's right on the line.
If you're talking about that boardwalk happening along Fox Road, is that what they're talking about?
There's like a, it's like something on a curb. It's, I don't know if it's, yeah, like it's something over there. Yeah, it's right by Echo Point. It affects Echo Point.
Yeah, that construction is part of Indianapolis. It's a Lawrence project that was planned two years ago, an indoor-funded project, but it is managed through Indianapolis.
Okay, so the questions in regards to like lawn maintenance for that, since it's not necessarily like Echo Point, that will go towards Indianapolis, not us?
Usually, I mean, usually I get those questions and I forward. It's been run by Indianapolis most, but they are running the project for us basically. It's based on some agreement. So I can take those questions. If you want to give them my information, I'll be more than happy to answer those questions.
Perfect. I will talk to you offline then. Thank you so much.
All right.
Any other councilors?
Madam President, I have one.
Okay.
A couple of my constituents contacted me about the caterers for the Sterrett Center and Gen Air. They wanted to know where did we come with the three caterers? And they were curious how these were picked.
Okay. So I think, and I know, I think the mayor's still there. I wanted to see if we could get a parks update in the month of May. And maybe that question, I've gotten a couple of calls about that change as well. So maybe if we could have a parks update on what's going on with parks, changes, projects, all that good stuff, I think that would be really helpful because it seems like we're, I'm getting from a couple of different councilors that they're getting calls in reference to that. So I'd appreciate if we could get parks on the agenda for our next council meeting, the one in May, the first one in May.
You want me to answer the question about the catering, President Chavez?
Yeah, that would be fine.
I can answer you that real quick. That RFP went out back in November of last year, and we had four different caterers that responded. Only three of the four met the requirements. So those three now have been the exclusive caterers for any parks and arts for Lawrence event. They are Porter's Books and Bread, Fitzgerald's, and Chef Suzanne are the three caterers.
And so Mayor, isn't it that the only parks facilities that have to have the caterers is Gen Air and the Sterrett Center?
Those two, yeah, those are the two with kitchens, yes. Well, community, Community Park will too. They have a kitchen. They've got a small kitchen that they could use. But I doubt that that would be a catering event over there.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what's included, what's not included. And then I know I've also received questions or concerns about why licensed caterers wouldn't have the ability to cater there as long as, and be assessed a fee. So if it's about, you know, finances, that's one issue. But if they're licensed, if there could be a provision to where, if someone decided to go with another caterer, that they would be charged a separate fee to make sure that the city would be whole. So I think it's just some calls we're getting, some recommendations, and see if maybe we can get some of that feedback in a more formal way to the Parks Board. So anybody else have anything else on that matter while the mayor is there?
What had become problematic for us over the years was that we had various and sundry groups coming in and using the kitchen and leaving it a mess. We had, we went out, we spent a good sum of money bringing all of our kitchens up to code in the last couple of months. And so now that we're there, we trust that these caterers will maintain the facility. That's part of their contractual obligation.
Madam President, I guess why you said while we're on the topic, just out of curiosity, I know there's been a lot of different discussions and plans regarding the parks, not just about the kitchens, that hasn't really made itself to be in front of the council. Come the May meeting, will we be able to hear those plans or hear what your vision is?
Well, it wouldn't be just my vision. It would be the vision of the Parks Board and the park staff and so on. So I'm sure if you invited Eric and members of the Parks Board, Jeff Vest specifically, you'd get a much better, probably, answer than what I can give you. But those two, if you bring Vest and Eric Martin in, they can be able to give you a far better overview of what the parks are doing right now.
Okay. I will hook out to them and ask them to attend that first meeting in May. Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Oops, I got two people. So ladies first, Ruzmora.
Thank you. I have a couple items, if I may. Number one, we are having some issues in my area regarding unleashed dogs and attacking residents as well as other animals. And so if Lawrence Police can make sure that they follow up on all those citations to those owners, we would greatly appreciate it. We're also having additional speeding and with the weather getting nicer and children out, we really would like a little more regulation in that area if we could. And I do have an announcement, if I may, regarding the library meeting on Thursday. They asked that I read specific information and language, if that's okay?
Go right ahead.
Join IndyPL and Ratio Architects to get a progress update and see the design proposal for the Fort Ben.
Council Wells, go on mute, please.
Fort Ben Library Branch. This meeting will take place via a Zoom online meeting. Register to receive an email with the login link, and it will be sent the morning of the event. The event will be Thursday, April 8th, 6:30 online. That link would include the following: Thank you for that. That's all I have.
And then also, if we can, if maybe someone from the administration can make sure that that gets posted maybe on our city site, maybe that'll be helpful for those that weren't able to capture it. Okay. Is that Counselor Denny?
Yeah, I have a real quick one. And I want to make sure I add a positive note to the parks that, and just give a note back to the council. Maybe I'll make sure that Trace Yates, Executive Director of the Parks Foundation, is in attendance in May as well. But just really quick, we've done now, the Parks Foundation has done two mobile food drives at Lawrence Community Park, very successful, given out close to 2,000 total food boxes. And the last one, Counselor, Counselor Wells loaned us a vehicle to utilize, and I was very appreciative of him doing that. But it was a lot of rain, a lot of challenges, a lot of team building that day, impromptu team building exercises. But the food got out to the residents and not, one food box did not make it into a home so far for those two. So thanks to Eric Martin and the rest of the Parks Administration. Really wanted to send that along. And I think Trace, Executive Director Trace Yates, will give a much bigger, more thorough report back in May.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Chevlat?
Okay. Just real two quick brief points. I really appreciate Mr. Zerner's update on economic development and the list. It was pithy, brief, to the point. I love that. But it was very comprehensive, very much appreciated. Second, we had talked over the last couple of years, and Sri, this might be for you. You don't have to answer it now. But now that spring is here, and we've had a pretty mild winter, but there's a number of paving projects that we've been hearing about over the last couple of years. If there's any way that we can get an idea of a schedule or calendar of when those paving projects will be, and more importantly, where they will be?
Yeah, Counselor Re, we applied for community crossing grants, but this time we only went after half a million because of budget constraints. So we have identified like two or three small segments. One is the Shadland Way. I can send everybody the list of, only three streets were selected just because the pot of money is more for us to spend this year. So we have not heard anything back from State on that yet. So I'm hoping we will be able to get those $50,000 from State. So as soon as I hear that, and I'll let you know with the list of the streets. Again, it's just three streets for now. And the rest of the streets, we're gonna do strip patching, just like we do every year.
That's fine. And then just, I forgot one last thing is the new signs that had been put up by Lawrence with respect to the, I don't know if you guys have seen them, but they're really, really pretty. I can't remember the young guy's name that designed it.
Ethan.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But really beautiful. It's just another compliment to our city and just the design. So I appreciate that. Looks very nice.
Yeah, and Sri, if you could jot down, I actually wanted to see if we could get a parks update in May and a streets update in June. So if you can put that on your calendar, maybe by then you've gotten some updates. And the only other thing that...
Counselor, just so you know, June, I will be in, I applied to go to India in June, so I booked my tickets. So I might not be available for the June council meeting, but I can make sure that Jim Hannigan or somebody from the street department will be there.
Sri, did the council approve your trip? Sorry. Sorry, I shouldn't have said.
No, no, I think.
One other thing that, just in preparation for that June meeting, is I have been getting questions about street cleaning and what our plan is to be able to accelerate that a little bit because there's some concerns with just trash and debris in our standard thorough major fairs, but also on some of our secondary roads. So I wanted to see if we could get an update on that as well.
Absolutely. I'll make sure Jim Hannigan will be there because he's in fact managing all that. And I will make sure that he, I'll give him an update on the project side of that too, on the, in a very end project and schedule. So we'll make sure he'll be there.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other councilors? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have an economic development update from Dan Zerner.
Thank you, councilors, and President Chavez. So as a matter of update, I did forward, as Mr. Chevlat referenced, a long report. I brought three things I thought of interest to you tonight. But before I get to those, does anyone have any specific questions regarding my report that you would like to have addressed?
Yes, can you please explain, and I think you have this down, but I just want to make sure the, as much as you can share, because I know some of this stuff is under non-disclosure. But there were those that were very excited that there was, that Pendleton Pike and I think Franklin was gonna be a grocery store. I want to make sure that we dispel of any of that in this meeting.
So Jared, do you have, have you given me screen share privileges? Looks like it. You should be able to see a site plan. I came prepared for that, Counselor Chavez, knowing you were gonna ask. But anyway, I don't have any more details to share with you other than you can see this beautiful site plan that's set out right now because right here is the Hispanic store. Here are the empty lots that you authorized us to sell right here. This is going to be a total transformation of the Franklin-Pendleton Pike corridor. The good news, and this is a national chain, I'm being told, but I haven't been told which specific chain, but you can kind of look at the drive-through layouts and think all the places you've been and get some pretty good idea of what we're gonna see. We just finished negotiating the PSA. That's the, stands for Purchase-Sale Agreement for this property. It was executed, it'll be executed by Thursday, if it isn't already, by the RDC and the owner. They have up to three years to develop this project. My guess is it's gonna take about two. But there's a lot of due diligence. There's a lot of traffic work that has to be done for indot approvals. There's a lot of things yet to go. But they paid a significant sum for these properties. They're moving forward with their design, and we've completed the documents. So this is what you can expect to see in terms of a site layout on that corner, if that helps you. But it'll be a very nice restaurant-type facility. Does that answer your questions efficiently?
Yes, it did. And I'm sure that it's piqued everyone's interest, and I'm sure they're excited about that. So thank you.
Sure. So the next thing I want to share with you is in 2024, indot will be redoing all of and north of 56th Street. Let me know when you can see it. I'm getting text messages where I'm frozen.
Counselor Chavez, you're muted. Dan, I think we missed most of your explanation of the second map that popped up. So if you would mind reading it.
Yeah, we can hear you and see you now, Dan.
Okay, so I'm sorry, my internet froze up evidently. But this is a new divided highway section. Pendleton Pike is gonna be redone totally from 465 to north 56th Street. It's primarily gonna be divided medians to keep people from making left-hand turns. This is considered to be one of the most dangerous stretches of the sixth in the state of Indiana. So just wanted you to know this is going to occur. And one of the things that we'll be coming back to the council for, I'm sure at some point in time over the next couple of years, is, to me, it's extremely exciting. Indot has offered to make these landscape medians.
Yes.
So we'll be able to put these full of trees and shrubs and make it look more like when you enter Beech Grove or other places. And I think it gives us a total opportunity to restate what our community looks like. So this will be a very exciting opportunity for the city to consider as we go forward.
And I'm sorry, when did you say the timing of that was?
Construction will begin in 2024.
24, 2024.
Okay.
So there are a lot of decisions to be made, a lot of engineering. And of course, there'll be costs that'll be figured out and whether or not, how the maintenance costs might go on forward or who we can get to share those. Can we have a project, you know, like a mile or some kind of thing? So there's a lot of, it's way premature other than it's, as we look at the Trades District and how we're gonna transform this community and make it look totally different than does now. I think this is really exciting to think of this as a possibility in addition to many of the other things we have going on.
I think, just to add to that, I think indot is expecting, indot is hoping that, you know, they are willing to put us a landscape median. But indot is hoping that we will take over the, you know, adoption kind of a thing. They would like to know about some of that decision sooner than later, during the early design phase, because if we don't agree, if we don't want to maintain it, they're gonna go ahead and put a concrete, all concrete median, not a landscape one. So that's some of the decisions that we might have to talk about sometime this year.
Excited to talk about it.
The last thing I put up here for you, I wanted to provide some clarification. Counselor Ruzmora reached out to me. You saw in my report where we were looking at trying to parcel a piece. I referenced it as 10-148. Well, that's just a placeholder. This is 10-148. This parcel right here could be an extremely valuable commercial parcel to the city. This is at 56th Street. This is the old 56th Street where it terminates. And when this all got done, somehow this property ended up inside a city right-of-way, right here. And obviously, this particular business isn't very desirable to look at compared to this beautiful intersection. Indot, by the way, is looking at maybe modifying this intersection as part of that 2024 project. But we have commissioned a survey of this property right here, and we are looking at how we might separate this parcel out and make this available for a beautiful commercial development. We have a couple of parties that have already reached out to us interested in purchasing this. So I know it's not gonna be hard to sell. But I think it gives us the opportunity to turn this into a really nice tax-producing, viable commercial operation, and at the same time, hide a lot of this that's so undesirable.
I'm sorry, 56th and what, Dan?
Pendleton Pike.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is Pendleton here, Lisa. So you're going to have me coming back in front of the council at some point in the future saying that we would like to have permission to sell this property. But right now, we're developing a legal description and a survey to determine how much of this we can actually plot out and how much we can't. But I think this will make a major difference in the appearance of the community. So those are the three things especially that I wanted to make you aware of tonight, that let you know some of the, that's just one of many things we're working on. But as always, I'm glad to take your questions and glad to have you reach out and help you in any way that I can. Might also mention to you that the drone deck project has been closed, and they are expecting to start construction in their headquarters building somewhere in the May timeframe. They've spent already about half a million dollars cleaning it up. That's the 4423 Shadland Project. And in addition, they're expecting to use the city of Lawrence midsummer to do their pilot project for their drone activity. And we're working with ALIF at the fort and others, but you'll probably see drones flying packages in Lawrence before the end of this year. So it's some pretty neat stuff.
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
What's the status of Freeji?
Oh, thank you. Freeji has officially been closed. We closed it about two weeks ago, three weeks ago now. We're working through a little issue with the moving of a AT&amp;T service line along the old Plumber Street. We expect that to be wrapped up relatively soon. We do expect them to be breaking ground on utilities and the construction of what we're calling Plumber Street North, probably beginning as early as May, May 1st.
Terrific. Long time coming.
Yep.
Any other councilors have questions?
Madam President, I just would like to make one comment to Mr. Zerner regarding the new medians and the reconstruction of Pendleton Pike. I want to be sure that we keep in mind that pedestrian crossing points are extremely important. And I personally have done some trail and pedestrian crossing at this particular intersection at 56th Street and Pendleton Pike. And I have a lot of good valuable information, and I would love to share that with anyone that might be interested because I think it's really important that we connect our city, especially given the fact that there's a new library coming, and we need to have the greater consideration, in my opinion, regarding pedestrian crossways and abilities. Thank you.
To bring that up, Councilman, the indot has made clear to Sri and I that they're taking a very strong look at redoing many of the sidewalks and crossings, some of which are not even existent at this point. That's a big, pedestrian access is a huge part of this project.
Great, thank you. Counselor Denny, do you have a comment?
Just a quick question, and you could answer it offline or if it was in your packet. I'm sorry, I don't remember. The very last, since you're talking about medians and lights, the very last stoplight before you get to 465, kind of coming southwest, it says right turn only, but it turns into the Trades District where Papa's Pancake House, you know, used to be. A lot of folks will line up there and head straight as if they were right turning onto 465, where technically the lane next to it is the 465 entrance straight lane. Do you know, is in your plan or in the indot plan, is that being addressed? That light and those lane changes right there?
I don't think it is. But I think I can mention that to the indot traffic engineer to take a look at it and make sure that it's configured right. They are not changing, they are not adding any signals or any light changes to that. They are just, especially that signal, I don't even know what you're talking about. I think it's just like they have to reconfigure the lines and signal heads. So I'll notify the traffic engineer, and he, I'm pretty sure he'll, it's an indot signal, so we'll have to just go through them to make, I mean, we'll notify them and follow up with them to fix it.
Oh, thank you, Sri.
Councilman Chavez, thank you very much for the opportunity to be in front of all of you. And all of you should have my contact information. Just feel free to reach out if I can answer anything at any time.
Thank you so much for your time and all the information. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of March 1st and March 17th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion, Counselor Whitfield, second, Counselor Freeman. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Ruzmora?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Chavez? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Motion, Counselor Chavez?
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Russell. Okay, seeing that, roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Ruzmora?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Chavez? Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees.
Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee met just before our council meeting tonight. We looked at two items, proposal number two, to establish the 2021 budget for the Stormwater Management District. And we discussed that. It went very much in line with the proposal we received last year, and that was recommended out of committee and a vote four to zero. There was an amendment attached to that that was proposed during our committee, and Chris, would you be able to just touch base a little bit on the amendment since you helped to draft that?
Sure. So, it's my understanding that Arts for Lawrence and the city are in agreement on the proposed amendment that was circulated to you earlier today, which would make the execution of the lease contingent upon the approval of a separate agreement to transfer the building from FHRA to the city.
And thank you, thank you, Chris. And all of that was recommended out of our committee four to zero. And I have nothing else further to report. Counselor Chavis, I believe you're muted as well.
I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Denny. Next on the agenda, we have unfinished business, resolution number two, 2021.
I make a motion that we approve?
Did you want to read it by title?
Please.
Okay.
Resolution two, 2021, introduced by Counselor Chevlat. A resolution of the common counsel of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, approving a form of lease and taking other actions regarding the proposed lease.
Madam President, I'd like to propose an amendment to resolution number two.
Okay.
I would, there was a draft sent out earlier, I'm trying to pull it back up, but I'd like to amend one of the, to add a section that would include, hold on, I'm trying to pull it up here, to read the text to you.
Would you like some help, Counselor Denny?
Yes, if you have it right in front of you. I've got too many Word docs open all of a sudden.
Well, I'm suffering from the same, if Madam President, that's okay. Essentially, the new language that Counselor Denny requested would amend the body of the resolution to add a new section asking for a report from the mayor before the next phase of the project would come before the council, which could be a report on project-related energy efficiency, material reclaiming and recycling at the site, and the inclusion of folding bay doors at the new station.
Can I ask a question about this? I thought that I read that this was in, in future resolutions, not for this particular one that's already before the Finance Committee that was passed out. So, are you adding this amendment to the existing resolution that's already been approved out of Finance? Or is this in, is this for future? Because I read it was for future projects.
Was it amendment to the resolution that's presently before you?
Correct. But it says, okay.
And we recommend it.
Go ahead, Counselor Denny.
I was just gonna say, and it was recommended out of, of committee, but these were some of the items that did come back in our council as the whole, that I felt we really should include and ask for a report back from the administration.
Well, and things can be amended anytime after they come out of, before passage, and the reference to future resolution is the future resolution that's in the timeline that was originally provided by the administration. There's got to be another resolution related to execution of the lease and the bond band issuance as well.
Okay, so future resolutions, but we're talking about folding doors and things of this, so I'd be interested to hear if this is something that the fire chief and the construction engineers have had a conversation about, reclamation of material and this and that. So, my fear, my concern is, is that adding these in now, does this delay the project? Because as we heard at the last meeting, there's a time-sensitive element to this, and so, can you give me some background on this, Counselor Denny, on the amendments to these?
So, I'm, Counselor Denny?
Go ahead, Counselor, yeah.
On the, on the, the report, the items that are in the amendment, I think for the reporting purposes, I think if we separate that from the doors, I think that's just, you know, a concern by a couple of the council members to make sure that, you know, I think we've heard over and over again, that where we can, that energy efficiency, energy savings, things are implemented into the project as much as possible. So I don't think that's anything that hasn't already been said, and I think that's an easy one for us to all agree on, including, I believe, that the administration and the chief have recognized that that's important, and there is an effort there to do that. We just want to make sure that that's being done at every phase of the project. And then the second thing is about, you know, I'm thinking that Garmong, since they're in this business, probably has relationships with people who, who want the brick or who want the whatever. I think the emphasis there is that where possible, we're being environmentally sound and aware of making sure that where and when possible, those things can be recycled, given away, reused, or whatever. So I think if the mayor or the administration would be okay with that, I don't think that any of these changes that are being proposed, with the exception of the, the doors, which we would have to have Controller Fenwick speak to, there wouldn't be any reason why, if we move forward on this tonight, that we couldn't go ahead and move forward with resolution number two.
And to clarify a little bit, again, it's a report, and so we've asked a couple times about, or I have anyway, about the doors and the folding doors, and I believe another, another counselor did as well. These are, I'm more interested in what the cost is over maybe the existence of what is currently being proposed, that it's interesting, I read it, the research I conducted, and not to take away from anything that Chief Patalis and his comments regarding the station are, but some of the research I found are these doors, in case of a power failure, in case the backup generator fails, these doors can open just with the pushing, you know, one individual could open these doors, and it is a new item that is being looked at across the country. So I would like this, some type of documents as we did look at these, and this is why they're excluded, because I could see us adding this item to all the stations down the road, and since we're at the point of discussing a brand-new station, why not discuss these brand-new doors that are also part of, of the national discussion?
I see Dino up there.
Yeah, and, and just so Dino knows where he's going with that question, is, because we've talked about this, Counselor Denny and I, is that we're not outside of the upfront cost. So he's looking for, outside of the upfront cost, why is it that we aren't considering these? So, don't, don't make costs be a part of the conversation. Give us the other reasons.
Okay, well, there's, other than that they look nice, and if these doors are damaged anyway or need maintenance, it is a higher cost to repair them. But I don't think, I think you have to look at the initial cost, because as your constituents ask you, I couldn't answer that question. It's $48,000 per door versus 15. So, if one of your constituents, somebody from the public asks me to, why we went with the more expensive door, there's no way I could convey to them why we went with a $48,000 door versus a $15,000 door, which almost all of Marion County, that most of the fire stations have the roll-up doors. That is the reason we have generators and they're serviced like twice a year to make, you know, anything can happen, but I would have a hard time, there's 10 doors at that station, and I would think any counselor on the city council or myself would have a hard time substantiating that cost difference. We looked at it, the committee looked at this, it's something that would be nice, they look nice, but I think you have to look at the initial cost of this thing, because it's not just a few dollars, it's several thousands of dollars difference.
Yeah, so isn't the thought though, that, or it doesn't, the purpose of these doors is that they save costs in maintenance over the life of the doors? So that's why I said, don't just talk about, you know, I'm talking about total cost, not just upfront cost.
Right, right, well, no, I agree, but I think that these doors are, they haven't been around long enough to really substantiate what's gonna be less expensive or more expensive in the future. The, the information that we have, and like I said, they're relatively, I say new, they've been around, but they're relatively new, because if they were that great, all these new firehouses being built in Marion County would, would have them all. And to my knowledge, I think there's only one station, one or two in the whole Marion County that has those. But I was trying, the committee was trying to do their due diligence and trying to spec out a station that they needed, and when they found out the cost, that, you know, their eyes opened wide open, as mine did, we had no idea that there was gonna be that much difference in, in that. They do look nicer, and in case of a power failure, yeah, they do, they just, they push right open, but we have done, I feel like, a really good job with maintaining, either purchasing new or repairing generators for these stations, and the new station will have a brand-new, that was incorporated in the cost, a brand-new generator for that station.
Yeah, my, my concern is, we're adding, adding things to something that I think a lot of due diligence has been put into, and I'm, certainly, I'm not a construction engineer, but my concern is like, like Chief DePaul said, is, we're adding cost to something that us as counselors, I don't know that any of us really have this kind of expertise to determine what kind of doors and things to put on, so that's my only concern.
Yeah, and you bring up a point, and as I said, if it's just one door, but you're talking about five doors front, five doors, so you're talking about a total of 10 doors. So it's not just like one door we're talking about.
Madam Chair, Madam President.
Giles?
Well, I think, thank you for, thank you for that information, Chief, I appreciate that. Again, going through this project, it was nice to know that you had a committee that looked at all these different things, and, and so I think what we can learn from this is some of these questions that we may be giving you, you've already vetted, but we had no clue knowing that, because no reporting or nothing like that has been done to us. So I think some frustration that might come from your side of, hey, we've done the work already, and then some of us wanting to get in and be involved, could be, you know, taken care of for the next deal, and something we can learn from, and this is hopefully taken with the most positive way, so we can move forward as a city and not waste time, like, you know.
Well, and, and I, I agree with part of that, it's just that, in the past, I've been in the fire service for 33 years, normally, whether you're on a township board or a counselor, they usually don't get involved in the weeds on building of the station. They usually leave that up to the experts, and the, there's usually, more so than not, there's committees that try to cover all that. And if I would have known that this, the council would want those reports, but across the country, that normally councils don't get involved with building a firehouse. And they trust that, that we'll do this, our due diligence and build something that's safe, and not only for the present, but also for the future years also.
Thank you, and I would add, I think somebody else wanted to ask a question.
Out of purpose.
Madam President, I want to just jump in and, and touch on that, that point right there. So the, the research I found, and this goes along with the energy efficiency, and it's not to take away from your expertise and whatnot, I understand that, that you've been running a fire station and working with the fire department for many years, and this is your, your area of expertise. Some of the things that I read, it just added, about these doors added to the energy efficiency portion of it, and cut down the life cycle, since this is a 35-year-old building, could these doors be in place for the next 35 years? And when you look at the cost there, the cost over that time period reduces plus the the energy efficiency of it, and it reduced the, the level of risk that could be to someone that is right there if the door were to fail and, and come down, including, and what I also read was that the, the doors have a shorter opening time, and it was a lot of positive things from other fire chiefs, not from the sellers of these doors. So I was not looking to circumvent what you were doing or to add to it, but just to say, here's another piece of safety equipment, are we able to add that to your construction, to your new, to your building and save money throughout the entire history, or throughout the entire time that this building will be in operation? Should it be in operation for 35, 40, 50 years from, you know, from 2022 on, what is those future councils looking at? And that's where I was going with it, not, not to override. In fact, some of the reports I read were fire chiefs, the opposite seats where we're at, where a fire chief was trying to convince the council to go with this expense, so it had nothing to, the point is not, not to override your expertise, but, but to help you and, and your, your firemen there and firefighters at Fire Station 38.
And it wasn't just, in this committee...
Go ahead, Chief. Go ahead.
But these, this committee did a really good job of not just looking at what they had at hand, they traveled around Marion County, even a trip was made up to Monticello, so they've looked at and got opinions from firefighters, administrators, before they put this final plan together. So I guess I want you to know as a council, this wasn't like, they've been working this for almost two years, and I wanted you to know that, and I think, I think you, there's a better understanding on both sides now, but they have done their due diligence and looked at a lot of these things, a lot of ideas, so it wasn't just their ideas that were incorporated, this, they, they went to other places to incorporate these, these ideas.
Yeah, and I just want to make one comment. I don't, it's certainly within this purview of the council to ask any questions as it relates to approving a budget for a project. And so although I recognize that no one on this council is an expert, everyone on this council has, brings different level of experience and expertise in different areas, and certainly, I think that just as far as communication goes and collaboration, that going forward, we would want to have those committee reports, and we would want to know that information. Probably wouldn't even find it necessary to ask a whole bunch of questions as we get to this point. So I just think that it makes for better communication, better collaboration, and quite honestly, saves us all a lot of time and energy when we're at this point where we're getting ready to approve it. So much like, I would like to say that the, sort of the path that Mr. Zerner is going down with the Economic Development Plan, and with the Trades District, is, I look at that as similar to the process that we should be taking, going forward with building any new facility in our city. We need to be plugged in. We need to be plugged in, and we need to be involved as a council. Regardless if historically we've done it or not, I feel like it's the right thing to do, to make sure that this part of the process goes smoothly, because none of us wants to be where we are right now. So we take the time on the front end, so that in the back end, when we're ready to do this stuff, we've, we've gone down this road, and we didn't even have to have the discussion about the doors, because you presented it to us and it made sense, and we were like, okay, let's move on to the next thing. So thank you so much. Did any other counselors have any questions?
I would just like to, real quick, is, did Counselor Denny, does he have a motion going on, or is there no motion?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, I would just like to, I, I agree with you, Madam President, and I apologize for jumping in, I just want to make a motion to approve the resolution so we can move forward, because I agree with you, we just need to get to the next step, so that we can have these discussions.
So, okay. So...
I'll make a second.
Slow down.
I think I did make it, Madam.
Slow down.
I think, I didn't want to jump, I'm sorry.
Hold on a minute, we have a proposed amendment that we're talking about right now. We need to address that first, and then we will take the motion.
Okay, that's, I was confused by that, I apologize. Thank you so much for clarifying.
That's okay. So...
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor.
Madam President?
Yes. You have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you. I have a question for Chief Patalis. I'm sorry?
I think I did make a, Madam-
Slow down.
I think, I didn't want to jump, I'm sorry.
Hold on a minute, we have a proposed amendment that we're talking about right now. We need to address that first, and then we will take the motion.
Okay, that's, I was confused by that, I apologize, thank you so much for clarifying.
That's okay. So.
Madam President.
Yes, Council Well. Yes. You have the floor, Council Well.
I had a question for Chief Patales. I'm sorry. I had a question for Chief Patales regarding this door thing, if I may.
Go ahead.
It goes along with Sean Denny's amendment.
Yes, go right ahead.
The new building, will it have similar doors as to what you have now, where you have the manual chains, you can lift the doors by hand?
They'll be able to lift the doors by hand if the generator should fail. And in the past, where, when we came into this administration, to be totally honest with you, I couldn't vouch for not one of the five stations that I could say that we had a secure generator that was an operating order. And so now, we have either, if we were able to repair those generators, we did so, if not, we bought new ones. But those doors will be able, will also be able to be manually opened if the generator should fail. And like I said, even with the servicing done a couple times a year, I would never say on the air and say it's never going to happen because it could. But we have taken as many precautions as we can as far as not only the generator, but they would be able to be hand opened also.
Madam Chair, can I just say one last-
My concern is, you know, we had a, we had a, we had a pretty serious situation, I'm sure you remember in my district, matter of fact, about five years ago, when we had power failure pretty much throughout the city. The generator wouldn't start or couldn't, no one knew how to start the old generator and couldn't get the doors to open. And the, in our recent tour of Station 38, I noticed that some of the new doors, one in particular in front of the ladder truck, had this chain that you could pull to lift the door, but it wasn't connected to anything. So therefore, it was really, it was just there, and, but it definitely wasn't functional. So I think that the chain, you know, I think that some manual method of opening these doors is imperative. And I think that they, you know, whether, you know, you've got an old station or a brand-new station, you know, anything can happen, you know, the power can go out, the new generator cannot start. You know, I still think we should have a failsafe, whether we go with what Counselor Denny's talking about, or just something as simple as these chain lift doors.
Okay.
But if we do do the chain lift doors, I think they should be functional.
Yeah, and to address your issue, Council Wells, that's exactly why we went through all these generators, because when we took over, that was fairly early in 2016 when that occurred, and that generator was not working properly. And given that fact too, on that day, all our resources were completely depleted. And so we were getting help from outside sources because during that storm, we had accidents, we had fires, we had everything going on at one time, which happens when you have that type of weather. So I think it was the perfect storm, so to speak, but that's what, we were very concerned about that and working with the controller and the mayor, we got all those generators rectified because it was, it was a huge issue, and we feel now it's corrected. And we do maintenance on these things twice a year, pay a company to come out and actually test these, replace batteries, or whatever's needed. So I think we've done a really good job of making sure these generators are functional.
Council Denny, did you want to make a-
Real quick question.
Go ahead, Council Wells.
I'm sorry, I still have one other question, if I may.
I said, go ahead.
Thank you. The, yes, thank you. The generator that's there in Station 38 now, I would suppose is no more than a few years old, would that be correct?
Yeah, that was a refurbished generator that we put there. It's, and it's, it's not what, that, I don't believe, I will double check, I don't think that was one of the new ones we bought, but I think it was a refurbished generator. We had, we had one previously there-
Is that going?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I remember the one that was there was like an old military generator, but I was just concerned that, you know, if we, if we just replaced this generator, that we not maybe throw it away, that we should save it for one of the other stations or spare? I know they're very expensive.
Right, anything that's in working order, that was, our plan, we've already, in councilors, we have taken that consideration, that will be kept as a backup if we need it. So if something's in working function order of that magnitude, something that's big like that, we will, we will hold on to it. But we feel like the generators now will not meet the needs of what that new station will call for, so that definitely needs to be updated. It might be okay to use as a reserve until a new one was purchased, but we, definitely there's times have changed where what needs to be powered in that station.
Okay, Council Denny, do you want to make one final comment about your proposed amendment?
Yeah, I, thank you. Just, just a couple, one quick, I guess two quick points, is that the amendment asks for a report, this isn't a demand that these pieces be added to the station or the construction, or the station will not proceed without these items. This is a request for a report from administration that at the next resolution, which we've talked about, there's a presentation regarding the design, that, all these other presentations that come up, that a report regarding these items is included with that. That's all this amendment asks for, is a report from administration. Thank you.
Okay, so, are you making a motion, Council Denny, on that proposed amendment?
Yes, I am making a motion to amend Resolution 2 with the text that we just discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
I would, I would second it.
Okay, there's a motion, Council Denny, a second, Council Wells. Any discussion? Now we need a motion to, a motion to approve-
We need to vote on the motion to amend.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to hit myself. Roll call, vote, motion to amend. Council Giles?
Yes.
Council Wells? Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Russamora?
Yes.
Council Chevlot?
No.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Denny?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to approve the amended version.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Motion, Council Russell, second. Okay, we got a lot of seconds, I think I heard Council Freeman first, so second, Council Freeman.
Yes.
Any discussion? All right?
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, I would like to just say this, that I did tour Station 38, and one thing that I did come away with in my, in my tour, and I thank the firemen for allowing me to look the building over, I am uncomfortable with the fact that the administration wants to tear this building to the ground. I think considering its age, that, I mean, I'm just not convinced that the building is destined to be, or should be demolished. I much rather would have liked to see it repurposed and possibly Station 38 maybe relocated someplace as close as possible. But one thing I did come away with is that it is definitely substandard, especially the living areas for firefighters, and I just don't think that should be something we should, we should tolerate. So if this is the only solution, and we're not going to look at, you know, saving Station 38, then I guess that's just, you know, something we need to go with. But just for the record, I just wanted to say I'm not in favor of tearing this building to the ground, and, but I am wanting to see better accommodations for our firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Wells. So we have a motion, Council Russell, a second, Council Freeman. If there's no more discussion, roll call, vote. Council Giles?
Yes.
Council Wells?
Yes.
Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Russamora?
Yes.
Council Chevlot?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Denny?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis? Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations to the chief, to our firefighters, and to the administration, and to this council, and to the City of Lawrence. I think this is, this is great, and it's wonderful that we have unanimous support. I'm not going to apologize that it took the time that it did, I think we did our due diligence, and I appreciate everyone's patience. I appreciate everyone working extremely hard to answer our questions and concerns, and we're looking forward to a beautiful new Fire Station 38. Thank you. All right, one moment. Sorry, I'm having some video problems here, guys. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Proposal Number 2, 2021.
Proposal Number 2, 2021, introduced by Council Chavis. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, establishing a 2021 budget for the City of Lawrence Stormwater Management District.
Okay, and Council Denny covered the update, this was passed out of the Finance Committee with the unanimous recommendation to the full council. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Council-
Second.
Motion, Council Chevlot, second, Council Denny. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, vote. Council Giles?
Yes.
Council Wells? Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Russamora?
Yes.
Council Chevlot?
Yes.
Council Russell? Council Denny?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Okay, next we have Resolution Number 3, 2021.
Resolution Number 3, 2021, introduced by Council Chavis. A resolution approving the form of lease between the City of Lawrence, Indiana, and Arts for Lawrence for the Visual Arts Center Building.
Okay, and Council Freeman, I mean, I'm sorry, Council Denny provided an update on that as well. The Finance Committee unanimously voted to move this to full council for consideration. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, I'll second it, go ahead, Council Russell.
So it sounds like it's Council Russell, and then Council Denny as the second? Any discussion?
This is accept the amendment, right?
Yeah, so we need, we need-
We need two motions.
So we need a motion to accept the amended version, so Council Russell and Council Denny make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, right, okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? Roll call, vote to accept the amended version. Council Giles?
Yes.
Council Wells? Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Russamora?
Yes.
Council Chevlot?
Yes.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Denny?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Now we need a motion, and I'm sorry, that carries unanimous, we need a motion to approve the amended version.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Council Russamora?
I'll second.
Second, Council Russell. Any discussion?
One quick question, Council Chavis, we have Executive Director of Arts for Lawrence, Ms. Judy Byron on the, here with us. At some point, either after this or before the vote, could she just share with us when the grand opening is going to be of your event?
We'll definitely cover that under, in the next, under comments of the administration, I'll put it there. Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote. Council Giles?
Sorry, yes.
Council Wells? Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Russamora?
Yes.
Council Chevlot?
Yep.
Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Denny?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Next we have new business. There is none. Comments of the administration.
I'll speak right into Judy.
Judy, you have the floor.
Thanks, so the grand opening of the Fort Ben Cultural Campus is scheduled for May 22nd, that's a Saturday. It's an all-day festival, starting at 1:00 p.m. and ending at 10:00 p.m. The evening before is a VIP, by invitation only. It is also a free event, you all should have received a save the date invitation by email, and there will be invitations going out by mail and email very soon. That is a Friday evening event, and you will get a behind-the-scenes tour of all of the phases that have been completed. The grand opening will open with a proclamation by the mayor, and the project will be substantially complete. It will not be finished, but all of the facilities will be, excuse me, will be activated, and between Friday night and Saturday's festival, we will be showcasing over 150 artists, both performing and visual artists. So it's going to be a great time.
Great, thank you so much for that update.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. Kathy, do we have any comments from citizens?
No.
Okay. We are adjourned, everyone be safe and have a wonderful evening.